Commissioner Mizouni? Commissioner Parham?
President.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
And Chair Zinda. Commissioner Palmer's absence?
Yes.
Thank you Chairman Zinda, Chair Person Zinda, sorry. That's the first time I've said that in a long time. Anyway, this is kind of a hard project to visualize because it was also, it was, just in general, in sum, this was approved project from 2008 on a, on a, kind of a certain piece of land. It's kind of prominent, you know, on the, between two streets. And now we have a very desirable opportunity to expand the property next door, which I think was on the agenda for the city council last week. So part of that would mean taking the pre-approved, or the already approved, from 2008, project on that, I call it the peninsula, I don't know, it just kind of sticks out there.
It is.
Yeah, and move it directly across the street and make it smaller, because the property's not the same size. So this was a conditional use permit at the time, and still is. So anytime you modify, you know, change, relocate, do anything to an approved conditional use permit, you pretty much got to do that in another public hearing, because anything that was approved in a public hearing must be modified in a public hearing. So essentially, in May 2008, the Planning Commission approved a project for 38 units of those kind of duplex cedar-sided separate units on the peninsula. Now we're moving it closer to the highway, to a, probably a better shaped parcel. But it also shrinks by a few units because of the size. So I don't, really don't know how to approach this as much, because we have, what this is, is basically, it's an architectural design, which has already been approved, but again, this is a new hearing. So it's kind of, kind of awkward, but I think that the, I think the intent here is very valid, to move this project across the street and allow for this other development that would be way, I would say, much more desirable for that spot. So it's really the same thing. What we'd be doing... Anyway, it is key growth area six. So the general plan really does like to boost the fact that we want to have tourist-based businesses in key growth area six. The relocation of the 2008 hotel motel project would be consistent with that policy. And freeing up the property adjacent to the current Comfort Inn, that would also add to tourism resources and the vicinity. In 2008, they had, apparently they had an architectural review committee that did do some extensive work, I think I put that as an attachment, where we're looking at, all structures and improvements are placed with adherence to setback requirements, in those days. Now, interior vehicle circulation, now this was for the site plan on the other property. Now, I would almost venture to say that this new property is way better set up than that other one. So I did attach a conceptual site plan to this, showing pretty much the same units, but two less, or two less structures, kind of laid out. But that's not necessarily the site plan you're approving tonight, because the condition of approval, the first one, is that prior to getting a building permit, the applicant or owner has to come back with a site plan for review. This, the way this project came about was in such that this is kind of just the only way it would work. The other person, one of the applicants who would be giving up the property for the conference center, wouldn't agree to that, most likely, and I don't think any of us would either, unless they got their project that was already approved relocated. So that's kind of the, you know, what's going on here. So that's why I kind of included a lot of the old material, to just to show that the city did do its due diligence in looking at this as an architectural project. And in those days, they must have had a committee, nowadays you guys are the committee, and all these areas are checked. That's kind of what we look at for an architectural review anyway. So the buildings are the same, everything's the same, the only thing that's going to be different is this, the way it's laid out. Now, I have attached a, all the floor plans that were approved in 2008, very simple, straightforward elevation plans for those, and also a conceptual site plan, just to show that this, this project will indeed fit on the new project, the new property. However, we're still going to have to okay a site plan, so that's a condition of approval. Now, I think after, after the last few meetings, we've pretty much figured out that conditions of approval are legally enforceable, so when, if you do approve this with that one condition on there, all the other conditions are the same that were on the last project, except I think I added one at the end about lighting. It seems like we have a new awareness about lighting, which is a good thing, I believe. If you look at condition number eight, it says, "Lighting shall be downward facing full cutoff fixtures for the purpose of comfort..."
Okay, wait a minute.
Yep. Sorry.
What page are you on Keith?
I don't know, mine doesn't have a page number. But it's at, maybe Sandy could help, it's at the end of the staff report.
Are you looking at the conditions and notations here?
No, I'm sorry, that would be an attachment.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at the end of the staff report where it has conditions of...
Conditions of approval, right under recommendations.
Right. Now, those, those I've added, two. The first one is, prior to obtaining a building permit, a site plan shall be submitted and approved by the planning commission.
Gotcha.
As to circulation, parking compliance, ingress...
It's one page after the agenda.
Right, I'm sorry. Ingress and egress, snow storage, all the, all of the technical issues that usually go into a site plan. Can I put that in detail like that? Because, like I said, conditions of approval are legally enforceable, and so in order for this project to actually get a building permit, you've got to come back with a real site plan. What we have here is conceptual site plan. So on the attachments, we have a location map that shows that the former and current proposals are literally directly across the street. According to the state of California, that, that kind of almost means next door, because that's really a contiguous parcel. When a right-of-way doesn't do anything, it just means that they're still next door. So we're really just taking this project, approved in 2008, and moving it next door. In my opinion, I think it's, and this doesn't really mean anything as far as evidence goes...
Right.
But I think that it's a better location. It's tucked in next to a, next to a, it's a square, more of a square parcel, and it's kind of tucked into the freeway area, not on that peninsula. I think the plans for that peninsula would be much better for the city, and we will also be approving that design as well. So, you know, there's really not much I can elaborate on here. So I'm just kind of saying that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use will, under the circumstances, not be detrimental to health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such project, and the project as approved or as conditioned is consistent with the City of Weid general plan and municipal code. Those are the standard from the municipal code findings that were, were made in 2008, and what is, how it's stated in the municipal code. Now, architectural view, of course, that's been through the same process. "The architectural and general appearance of the buildings or structures and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and such as not to be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city, or to impair the desirability of investment or occupation of the neighborhood." I've added some discussion, again, to that, saying that they were approved in planning, by the planning commission in 2008, under the same guidelines. In fact, we know more about those guidelines today, and I'll probably be getting more into that the next thing, but really, there are no new factors which would change the manner in which the project relates to the commercial zoning in the area that was previously approved, or in the immediate vicinity. So my recommendation is, just really, if the planning commission can make the findings that I've put in the staff report, I would approve this relocation of the project with the conditions of approval as stated below. Now perhaps you can come up with something I forgot, that maybe laws have changed since then, and you could modify those conditions of approval, as long as you all vote on them. But that's my recommendation. Oh, I got to talk about SEQA too. This is an infill project, pretty much, pretty straightforward. We have, it's less than five acres, it's consistent with the general plan and zoning code, municipal code. It's been a disturbed site, so there's probably, probably, there is no, there's no like endangered species or anything located in that area. It looks to me like, from air photos and field observations, that it is a disturbed site, right next door to A, the freeway, and B, the Siskiyou Inn. Now, the other side, there is a similar vacant lot, so that's not, not built. But otherwise, it's substantially surrounded by urban development, meaning, you know, we have Starbucks, we have Siskiyou Inn, we have Comfort Inn, we have Pilot, we have a lot of stuff around there, so it is an infill project, so it's, it is exempt from SEQA. So, again, the, the, conditions of approval have not changed, except for the two that I've added, one about the site plan, and the other one about the lighting. So that's my staff report. If you have any questions, please feel free.
So, the conditional use permit that we would be deciding on tonight includes the architectural plan?
Yes.
But not any kind of tree permits?
No. Let's, let's talk about those tree permits. Those aren't, those aren't actually done until the building permit plans are submitted. You will be deciding on that, I believe, as well, just like it was before. There are some trees there.
There are a lot of tr...
Right. I kind of, you know, yeah. I'm just stating the facts. You know, where there is a lot, a little, it depends on where you're from, you know? My parents are from Montana, you know?
We've looked at the site, and, and, you know, I have, I have, you know, the common concerns about, you know, how many are going to be cut down, if they're left and incorporated in this landscape and things like that, but that'll come up farther down.
Exactly, that's kind of why we have a conceptual site plan, not a detailed site plan. The detailed site plan would probably have to identify, you know, the trees, just like we saw in the Loves project. Boy, I think since I've been here, we've probably done a few tree permits, and they're usually pretty accurate as far as what's being cut down. And you could work with the applicant to perhaps save some, keep some, like, like, if you look at the conceptual site plan, I mean, literally, I took a scale, I took the same scale and kind of put them, just put, you know, cut up the old one and put the units in there, just to show that there is a lot of open space still left, and there's design opportunities here that could perhaps satisfy the commission when it's time to approve the site plan. You know, we're going to be looking at parking, trash enclosures, tree permit concerns, all that stuff. This is just, this is a weird thing, you know?
The only other concern we have is, in the architectural design, they do mention the color scheme and the miscellaneous trim colors that might be added. The color scheme, the cedar shingle's very attractive. I'm assuming it's treated to a certain extent to be fireproof next to the freeway like that, I don't know, although I can't imagine it being any more liable to, to burn as the pine needles, six inches of pine needles on that lot.
Right.
And the trees.
Well, okay, like, a lot of that stuff is taken care of in the building code.
Right.
You know, we have things for noise, energy, you know?
Here's my, my concern is just a design concern, really. It's the cedar shingle, the, the roof is gray as composite shingles. The cedar shingles are beautiful at first, they're, have a lovely warmness to them, and then they fade to gray. So the whole site, if it's not, if we're not careful, will end up looking rather bleak, I think, after that, that shingle fades out. And so I'm concerned about, you know, some kind of attractive use of the trim color option and the landscaping is going to save the place, because those little cabins are going to be very monotone after a few years.
Well, one thing I've noticed about people's taste in, like, like, let's say that you have an idea to put what color you want, sometimes that changes over the years anyway. All I could say is, I don't really know how to judge color here, because we don't have any guidelines on what's acceptable colors. If we had a color chart, or something that we could compare this to, that would be one thing, but otherwise, it's just kind of subjective, but you never know how the applicant would respond. You know, if we had the applicant here tonight, we could probably hash out something, but to tell you the truth, there's really no point of law about the color that would say, "Don't like that color, therefore it's not consistent with these," you know, with the...
I also think that it is part of the planning commission's role to encourage a concept that's attractive for these buildings.
Right.
And, you know, they're going to look nice at the beginning, and depending on their land, you know, I want to see the landscaping plans, and I'd love to talk color with them. It's, it's, I have an art degree, so...
Right, I get it, I get it. Well, I got a planning degree, and, and, and I swear to God, this is the thing we've, we've dealt with in my, because I agree with you, that color is very important. I'm not the artist, though, but my background says, unless you have guidelines that are adopted, like, I swear, all through my Mount Shasta career, there was this old set of colors that they adopted a long time ago, that were so old, they looked like toothpaste colors to me, and then they kind of weren't adopted, and then they were, they went away. And one of the things we always talked about was, how are we going to, because people would come up with the purple things, and, you know, and it's like, certain people on the commission didn't like purple, or didn't like that color. So it became kind of a, a real mess. And, and, and the bottom line is, unless there's a guidelines, unless we adopt a color chart, there's not much you could say about color. I mean, the, the person can say, "No, I'm painting at this color." I mean, you could say, you could vote no, based on the color, but that wouldn't be defensible, if you know what I mean.
I'm concerned, because we've had building permits, use permits come up before, and architectural design review, and it included the color schemes down to the last bit of window trim on the outside.
Right.
And this doesn't, you know, it says three colors on the outside, and we don't know it. So I'm just concerned.
Well...
I know it's not, it's not something that we're deciding on tonight, but...
Well, no, you, you know, perhaps, because like, okay, like this, like, I'm not going to say that you're, that this is, you're off track, because you're not. Sometimes, let's say you approve colors for conditional use permit, but then 10 years later, they repaint, and it's now new colors that are more contemporary to whatever the new thing is. And so it's really hard. Color is like the thing that, it's kind of the, the bane of this, you know, unless you have some standards, it's really hard to pinpoint. The only thing I could really suggest is perhaps adding a condition of approval, that you guys look at the colors as well, but again, without the color standards, we don't know, it's all subject to opinion. So in my opinion, it's a little hard to do that. That's all I'm saying.
Because I don't really want to, you know, overlay my design sense on these clients. They've provided the necessary material, I'm, I'm just mentioning it, you know, as a form of encouragement, if they ever get the, you know, if they ever hear that...
Well, perhaps you could contact the applicant on the side...
It's possible.
And, and offer your design expertise, and I'm sure that no one is married to the colors that were approved in 2008. Because think about that, there's new, there's new colors, there's, the whole Weid, South Weid has changed, and there's a little bit different aspects to the designs of all buildings down there, you know, recently, so...
I'm just projecting what the cedar shingles will look like in a few years...
Right.
With the gray roof, and they'll look like, you know?
Right, right, I, yeah.
Beautiful and bleak, I'm afraid.
Well, you know, that's...
The landscaping is adequate to add some life to their design, and I care about stuff.
Is there, well, I'm, I'm absolutely agreeing, because we do, when I'm, when I'm thinking back on Grocery Outlet, I mean, all the buildings we have decided on, we've even tweaked, can you take that? I remember on a couple of things, can you have more of this color and less of this color? And here's, we're okaying something that, of course, it's going to be wood-looking, but what's the trim? Hopefully, there'll be something that the trim color is a third color, in other words, it's just not monotone. And it's odd that we're okaying this, and we don't know what that third color is. That's all, that's all...
Okay, let's put, I would say that we have three people here, I haven't heard from Daryl, but, yeah, that would be nice.
That's the other thing, too.
Well, let me just suggest, make a suggestion to address this first. Let's just add a condition of approval that, you know, we look at the color scheme one more time.
That could just be added to this list.
I think, I think...
It's not a big deal.
If you guys agree to that, you're, you make that call, I don't make that call, so let's, if you, if you vote to add that, it gets added.
Um, I'd say final approval on the color and landscaping.
Well, yeah, the site plan is definitely going to come, and, and, you know, okay, let's add landscaping in as a, because really, that's part of the deal.
We don't know exactly what plans were being planned, you know, any of that.
This list, landscaping.
Well, the last one, let me, let me just, let me just say that the last project didn't have any room for landscaping. If you, if you look at, I don't know, I didn't, did I include that site plan?
Yes, it's packed.
Very packed. That's why I think this is a big improvement, because of space.
But it's still pretty packed.
Well, you know, it is. So let's just, let's just say that yes, you have a point there, and I think it's possible to, for the commission to vote to add things such as that.
It says landscaping.
Okay, this application, this is the one that he filled out in 2008. Shouldn't you have to come in and do another application, so we can see if there's anything...
Well, actually, no, that was my doing, I, I added that just to show that that is the, seems to me like that's more for the buildings, the structure.
Well, if you go by that, then it says back here about the design, the structures, materials, colors are visible, harmonious, harmonious with the surrounding developing area. You just said that, that there's all different kinds of...
Things have grown since 2008, and so that, that's what the, the architectural review committee at the time thought of this project. Again, I have to say, the location's a little bit different, in that it's kind of tucked against the freeway, it's not in the middle of this, it's not on, it's not as visible. Yeah, well, I, I would think that your concerns could be, could be addressed.
So do we need to take a vote on this?
Well, yeah, but let's, let's formulate, if you guys are going to modify the conditions of approval, we need to formulate the language for that, so can we just agree on, on the language?
So, tonight we're looking at a conditional use permit, and before they can begin construction, they're going to need to submit building plans.
Building plans, and actually, as it's conditioned here, I'd like, we need to see a site plan, and which includes landscaping.
So, those are all things that could be considered at that step here?
The color is something I didn't mention in, in the conditions, so if there's a condi, if there's a question about a color...
My concern here is, we're going to deny somebody a property right that's inherently theirs, for something that was pre-approved in 2008, based on a subjective outlook on potential should've, could've in the future, based on weathering, you know, things that we haven't seen yet, that will come out in that building and landscaping plan in the future, that if is not acceptable to this owner, or is voted down here tonight, will prevent possibly two significantly impactful projects for the city from, from occurring.
Right.
And, you know, I've been out to the site, I've spent a lot of time in South Weid, looking at different sites out there, for various reasons, and, you know, we have a lot of issues, you know, not necessarily in that particular space, I mean, with the pine needles and things like that, but with, you know, detritus, you know, people dump garbage and, you know, old refrigerators and things like that in some of those places in South Weid.
On vacant lots, yes.
In vacant lots, so my concern is that, again, you, to ignore property right for a subjective value, and potentially put us in a position of not having positive development consistent with the general plan, and having empty lots full of pine needles and garbage is a concern for something that I think we can address in the future at that, that stage, when they can be here to present those, those plans.
I don't think we're really delaying the welcome use permit here, I think we're just adding some conditions, and, and what we're talking about, as far as modifying conditions of approval, it's only two things. We would like to be involved in the final design review for the landscaping and color scheme, and that could be done at the same time as we go over the final site review. And that's all we're doing, we're adding something to it, we're not...
We're not denying it.
We're, we're still deciding on the use permit tonight.
Right, but we are adding some constraints, so...
Well, you've got it.
Constraints that were actually, that we have, you know, these, these conditions we've experienced with other, you know, site approvals and things like that. Great Northern gave us a complete color scheme and landscaping down to what lands, what plants they were going to plant. The New Rec Center gave us a color scheme and talked about the design of the landscaping.
All of the buildings we've done.
You know, so, so this is not, this is not out of precedent, we're not getting enough information here, because it's from 2008. So I think, I think we just want to be involved in the final look at the place, instead of, you know, because I have concerns. That's all, we're just adding to it.
And I think we're only adding one thing, because landscaping is mentioned in number four, already.
That's all it says, it just says landscaping, it doesn't talk about...
Well, it...
I guess that would be on the site plan.
Yes, I, I've...
Final site plan, the landscaping.
Exactly. And this is, the thing about color, though, I, I actually don't thi, I don't anticipate this, this particular landowner fighting anything on color. I mean, if you guys say it needs to be this, you know, I mean, he just wants to get this, so he can, I mean, he already has a project over here, the city is entering into a very desirable agreement with the next door landowner there, for this to happen, he says, "Let's just move my project over here." Now, I don't think he's stuck on colors. I think if you guys are here and, and you have some kind of desires for colors, he'll go, "All right, then."
Bring him in when it comes, and let us know when he's...
Yeah, and so that, but, again, he can't build it without having, like, we don't, yeah, exactly.
No.
Now, I wish that we had a little more guidelines on color, what it looks like we have now is what's, what else is color around, you know, so I'm sure that compatibility with surrounding color schemes would be completely acceptable to this particular landowner...
And don't we have a...
Or a project proponent.
A folder of, we have architectural guidelines... A folder of, we have architectural guidelines.
Okay, that...
And, and what, they just talk about, like, earth tones. What we've done on everything else is basically earth tones. Subdued, natural, mountain, mountain colors.
Most architects in the area come up with those.
Yeah. And that's all we're looking for, just making sure.
Now, as far as those design guidelines go, you know, we have...
They're not law, they're just suggestions.
Exactly. Well, here's what we've, because staff has been trying to figure out how to deal with those. The law that, to have architecture review was adopted in 1963, I believe. And that just says, site plan and look at the building. Then, in 92, they adopted the Western theme thing, but I don't even think they adopted it. See, we've been trying to find the resolution that actually adopts those. We haven't been able to find it. So, there's, for one, they're intended for downtown. Two, I don't think they're really ever were adopted. So, it's kind of hard to kind of, kind of say anything. But if, but when we look at South Weed, well, forget the, you know, forget the Western, you know, we know how South Weed is going. It's going towards tourism, getting people off the freeway, revenue-based jobs down there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of light industrial type of zoning down there. So, staff is starting to kind of think that we need to fix that. You know, like, let's make sure it's clear that the design guidelines are for downtown.
But we use them on all those things. Everything we've done in South Davis has been that same palette. And even Love's brought that same palette.
Right, as far as color goes, I would say, because that's kind of like the norm nowadays, I would say. So, it's really not unreasonable to want it to be similar to other... And if there's some gray area, I guess, pardon the pun or whatever. You know, maybe, maybe that's, I don't think that the applicant is going to mind at all to discuss what color he chooses for the buildings. I really don't. I wasn't here then.
Oh, you were?
True. Now, let's...
And your point was taken, is that, and then paint gets changed.
Yeah, I mean, like, there's like, that's why we never, that's why cities shy away from adopting those color schemes because the next thing you know, the paint companies come out with a whole different palette that might even be an improvement on what the last palette was. You know, like, I think nowadays, you go to places like Bend, Oregon, Whitefish, Montana, you know, where they had, it's fancier, you know, and it's the same kind of colors that we all like. Kind of maroon colored trims, you know, earth tones, you know. But in the mountains, in the inner Mountain West, sometimes there's brighter colors, you know. I don't know, it's just really subjective. And that's why it's hard to base decisions on color. And I would, I would recommend against it, but...
Recommend what?
Against making decisions based on color, like saying, no, we don't like that color, therefore, we're going to deny this project. Because there's really no basis for that. You know, I wish we had the attorney here, but it's all about compatibility is really what we have. Oh, I didn't say that you were. But I just want to make sure that you guys understand that color is very subjective. And also, I still don't think that the applicant's going to care.
It's no big deal and we've done it for everybody else.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against putting a condition of approval on at least you guys having a say, you know. Well, let's just put it this way. He's going to have to come back for a site plan review. There's nothing, nothing that would stop you guys from asking him about the color. And saying, can we make these...
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I don't even know if we have to add a condition of approval, but if you guys want to, I bet you could.
Well, what do you...
You know, this is to, to address Daryl, Daryl's concerned, a condition, these permits runs with the land. Let's just say that...
Right.
So, he's already got this on that other side. So, if this doesn't, let's say it all falls through, well, guess what? He can build whatever he was approved for there. So, you know, without, without, so like, but, no, what I'm saying is, so the next one, you would almost think that you don't want to put more constraints. You don't want to take this opportunity to make it harder for him to develop a project across the street. But color, I don't know, I don't think it matters as much. So, I think that he, I don't think he would care, and I don't think that...
Do you think we even need to put it in here, Keith?
I don't know. You know, it's hard to say.
It'll be, it'll be part of what we look at when it comes.
Because we still have to make findings about it being compatible and stuff. So, I really don't think that color is the proponent's concern.
Well, that was, that was the basis of my point, is that it's, I don't feel it's necessary to add it at this point because it will be addressed in the future when that project proponent is here to discuss it with us. I am disappointed that, you know, proponent is not here tonight to discuss it.
Right.
But it is what it is.
It would make it easier.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm actually happy with just, you know, an acknowledgement of concern.
Right, right. I get what you're saying. I mean, I've been doing this...
If you don't say anything, then we don't have any to say.
Well, I mean, I've been doing these plans, right. I've been experiencing with this group for three years now. And I've never seen in any time when you guys are like actually, you know, against something, you know, except for maybe the big ones, as we know. But it's, color's subjective and most of the time, the applicants just want to get it approved and they'll paint it any color you want.
And, and...
Unless it's some kind of corporate, you know, thing.
And I think we're all reasonable people, and if it's a reasonable color, it's cool.
So, yeah. If you found a missing spot in the design review, well, let's fill that.
Is everyone's microphones on? We're having a hard time catching voices.
I'm having a hard time here, too.
Oh, there's mine.
I think mine's on.
Mine's on, but is it, there we go.
Keith's been a little low. Keith's shirt keeps...
I know, I kind of, I know that. It's like weird. Now that I'm on TV, I shouldn't wear these colors.
No, you turned to look at us and then your shoulders hits your mic.
What is the parcel number and address for the new lot?
I have, the parcel number is there. I don't think it has an address.
I'm getting the Chastina Drive in Black Butte address.
It's here.
Right there under that, let me, let me show you. It says, I usually say in the, well...
That's the parcel number?
APN is 060-552-140. And there is an attachment with the, with the AP maps that's in there that shows that it is the same one. It's just right across the street. That was done by our city clerk, sort of.
Beautifully done.
Yes.
It retained the same parcel number?
No, the old one is 1 something else. The new one is 1, 060-552-140.
That's the new one.
Okay, all right.
And that's like, that's the most accurate way to describe a parcel.
I was confused because...
Because sometimes I don't get the, there's no address until there's an actual building, so...
Yeah, I was confused because it's, the location says Chastina Drive in Black Butte, which is the location of the first lot.
Well, the way Black Butte, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, it's one lot in, yeah.
And that's why I'm questioning, you know, whether that's the proper...
Without an address, I didn't have...
Parcel number. I just wanted to make sure if we're making a motion that we're using the right numbers.
No, it's more accurately described as parcel APN 060-552-140 on the accessories maps of the county. Without an address, that's all we have, so...
So, I guess we're not going to, we're not going to vote on any kind of condition, design conditions at this point?
Well, it's here.
And see if we want to.
We're going to, we need to include the eight conditions of approval that staff is recommending us. So, we would, I am thinking we would, I, I make a, I move to approve the relocation of the project with the conditions, the eight conditions of approval as stated below.
Second.
Okay, at this point, all those in favor of, say, say yes?
Yes.
I...
Yes. The I's have it.
Well, thank you for, for the discussion. It was a good discussion, and I think the minutes will reflect the concerns of the planning commission.
Well, yeah, let's, so that's it for the regular agenda. We are approving the minutes from the October...
We still have one thing, don't we?
Do we have one thing?
We have a discussion.
Okay.
This is a broad discussion.
Oh, the workshop discussion.
Right. Okay. Before everything that we've been dealing with in the last two, two months came about, we adopted a general plan. And that general plan has implementation kind of implications, I guess. And since we're focused on the South Weed area, there are some, there are some things in there that we probably should start, I'm talking long-term planning here, or kind of how to implement the general plan. We have a couple of new elements. One is the economic development element. And one of the primary things that have to do with the South Weed area, see, it seems to be the hot topic. That's just where the development's actually occurring. So, we have to pretty much get our ducks in a row down there. And I'm just thinking, long-term, Ron and I are discussing how to put into action some of the general plan implementation programs. And one of the things is to increase the objective ED 1.2, you've heard me talk about this before, is to increase highway-serving commercial development in South Weed along Black Butte and Vista Drive. Now, in other parts of the general plan, we have a thing where we want to have jobs. And so, we're thinking in terms of, how are we going to balance this out? You know, like, between tourism and these kind of tourist-based, because there are other zones there. There's a lot of light industry zoning down in South Weed. It's not all Vista Drive and Black Butte Drive and Chastina Drive. There's stuff out in the, in the back. So, incentivize development in South Weed to supervise. So, we're trying to explore incentives. Now, one of the programs is to streamline the permitting process for developers seeking to locate businesses in South Weed. So, that's the big, that's, that's kind of a big, that's a big question that the, that the planning commission and city council have to consider. Of course, we also have as a program, you see, programs are implementation policies. So, we've already adopted an implementation policy to streamline the permitting process for developers seeking to locate businesses in South Weed. That sounds pretty broad. And then, again, down below that is market weed as a tourist destination to accommodate hospitality business to locate in South Weed. Again, that kind of ties in with the, with the issue we just talked about. So, we're trying to figure out, get some ideas, kind of broadly, kind of focus in on what would actually, how would this look? What kind of incentives are we talking about? But I think first we have to say, well, for one thing, there's different zonings down there. There's the C2, the C1, which is your retail tourism-based stuff. That's what people see when they come to the city, when they get off the freeway. That's, that's a long vista, you know. But in the hinterlands, there's places that are kind of meant for light industry and jobs. So, it's, so we've kind of included that, that section in the, in the municipal code about how design review, this was written in 1963 for all C, CM, and M. And sometimes it doesn't make sense to have a design review for like a, you know, like in places, let's say, well, heck, right around Solanos, there's a lot of metal buildings and a lot of industry. It's kind of like, we don't know how that kind of jives with incentivizing...
Utility buildings.
Yeah, utility buildings. And so, so we're looking at ways to kind of just, let's say, separate out the important stuff that needs to be looking pretty and the stuff that may not have to be. Like, something that may not be on a main drag or something that's surrounded by other utility buildings. So, we're just kind of toying with ideas to, you know, maybe start implementing this, this stuff and making changes to the zoning code. So, the memo was really written about trying to figure out what that might look like. It could be as simple as saying, okay, we want design review on, in commercial areas, but maybe not in an industrial area. But there's also conditional uses that always get design review. So, it's kind of a hard thing to say. I just, we're just looking for your input, basically. And we might come forth with some proposals in the next, next couple of months about this. Definitely incentivize, well, a program that's in the general plan says streamline the permitting process for developers seeking to locate in South Weed. You know, we don't have much process to streamline, except for a design review and conditional uses. Now, conditional uses won't change. There's a lot of things in, in the, like, let's say, the CM zone that requires conditional uses.
Keith, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
And maybe I was looking at this and I missed, I missed, but it's my understanding that there are, there is also residential...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, if you look at the map, I should have included that. There are some residential areas, but you know, when you look at the zoning map, the current zoning map, a lot of that area outside of Vista Drive on that side of the freeway is CM-zoned, which is mainly for jobs, you know, that's light industry. And throughout the whole general plan process, that's kind of what the community was wanting. So, we're just kind of trying to figure out how to streamline those permitting processes that are considering the fact that it is kind of a gateway. But also, there's stuff that's off the main drag that, you know, might be into industrial. And so, we're thinking that sometimes maybe it's an impediment to have extra processes. So, we're just trying to get some feedback from the commission. And basically, that's what this memo was about. And it might, you know, could be citywide. If it's as easy as just tweaking, you know, which zones require, you know, our design review, that would be citywide. But specifically, Key Growth Area 6 is where the action is now. And, well, that's where they're saying to streamline the permitting process. So, we adopted that. So, we're trying to figure out how. So, do you guys have any ideas? Or just discussion points we could consider?
I'm just going to say that, just, again, going back a few years to Grocery Outlet and start, the things that we, some of us have been here for, it seemed like they went really smooth and really quickly.
Yes, and that was the...
And I was like, wow!
Yes, and that was the C2 zoning. See, that's where that, that wouldn't change if we tried to streamline it a little bit.
Okay, so this is specifically this Area 6.
For sure, like, for sure, industrial zones. We have, we have an M zone. And I'm sure that every, the development pattern in a lot of the M zones has probably been those utility buildings. And now, there's probably landscaping, you know, built up around it. But that's what's there, that's what people expect, you know. And so, that could be, that could be changed. CM on, you know, is closer in to the commercial zoning. So, some of those uses that are in commercial zoning are conditional uses in the CM zone or a lot of uses are conditional uses so that planning commission still gets their say in it. But if there's some, it just seems kind of odd that if there's something that's off the main drag and surrounded by other like, you know, industrial uses, that, you know, why we have to go through this process? That's just kind of hard.
I'm not sure we do. I mean, maybe we just need to set up guidelines as to what needs a design review and what doesn't. I don't, I don't need to know what, what color the doorways are in a utility shed.
Well, that's the point. That the section 18.24.040 in the municipal code says that you guys have to do design review for C zones, that means C1 and C2, which is completely, you know, to me, you have to have that. Especially if you want to have a design, like a destination kind of place. You need to have a little say in what, how good things look downtown. You want to have, you know, Vista Drive. But when you get into your industrial zones, it also says CM and M. Just across the board, it says have to go through this design review process. So, we're just trying to figure out if that's, if streamlining could be that. Or, you know, we're just looking for some kind of ways to get there.
And at the same time, if we give blanket approval... we might end up in trouble at some point.
Well, that's why, that's why we're here tonight with a discussion.
It's the site and the type of business that dictates whether, you know, it's like, all the people-oriented businesses obviously need to have design approval, you know. But where, where's the cutoff? I think we just need to establish that.
The easy route would be CM and M. But CM's kind of a gray area.
That's what I mean about blanket approval.
So sometimes it's the use. If it's a C2 use, like, okay, let me show you. We have this matrix here.
So Keith, I have a question for you.
Sure.
In the last 15 years, how many applicants have complained about the process being too stringent, too long for that kind of use? And have we lost any potential development because of the current standards we have?
You know, that's, that's a question I can't answer, and I'm sorry about that. I've only been involved in the city of Weed for like four years, and I didn't anticipate that. But let's just say that, it really depends on the developer. Some, a, a well-funded developer is used to this stuff. But again, we're looking, where a design review, in my opinion, is appropriate is where you could, where it's on the boulevard, or, you know, like, where, where the people see it. Like, in our, in our C1 and C2 zones, you know. But off the beaten path, maybe not.
Right. I mean, I've, I've worked for the largest tech manufacturer in this county for the last 15 years, and I can tell you that the colleagues and industry contacts I deal with globally, they're not fleeing California because of design reviews.
Right, I, I, I understand that. I totally know that. Okay, but yeah, you're right. Okay, so, but when, we have this way, this, this setup here. It's like, we have C1, C2, CM, and then M. Okay, so it's like, they call it a, I forgot how they call it, cascading or something. But anyway, C1 is your downtown stuff. You get out to C2, which we call a service, you know, commercial, that includes all uses in C1, just as it's written. So C2 includes all that. So CM even says all uses permitted in the C2 district. Now, I would venture to say that if it is a use that's, that's, you know, listed in the C2s, that perhaps design review is very appropriate, because we want things to look good. This is, we want, the community, from what I gathered during all of the general plan process, is we still want to be a touristy kind of destination. I mean, I just went through the economic development, you know, tourism stuff. So obviously, we got to make things look good. Can't have a bunch of, you know, shacks and hand-painted signs, and you know what I mean? You want it to look good. So I guess the question is, what do we do with those, those, those things that are actually in an industrial area? Or in a CM-clear zone, you know, that isn't really on a main drag? So, and I, and I totally get what Daryl's saying, because that's been my experience, too. A well-funded developer that knows what they want, they don't bat an eye when, you know, a lot of times, when, when, it's the, it's the little guys. It's the, it's the local people that don't have the, quite the resources behind them that, you know, sometimes, you know, it requires a big SEQA study, it requires, there's just so much, you know, that they can handle. So it seems like, I think, that's what, what, what we're trying to look at here. And again, I just got to get back to the general plan, because that's really what the guiding document is here. We got to come up with some incentives, you know. To incentivize. And so, sometimes if we have, if we're looking at light industrial or industrial, maybe not having to go through design review. But that doesn't mean it doesn't get design review. Sometimes you could have a checklist, like, here's what it has to have. You know, and then you guys decide on the checklist. It's, that, that's what's the difference of an administrative decision is and a discretionary. We're, I don't have discretion authority. I have to have checkboxes. Is it this? Yes, it's that, it's that. It's like, some signs are administratively approved. You guys never see them. Some aren't. So it's like, we can't, staff can't exercise discretion. But perhaps if there were guidelines up front, you know.
Well, and that's the.
You know, that's what I'm thinking, you know, maybe too.
That's where the, the dividing line, that, you know, a checklist could, list could say, you know, what's the location? How much does the public see it? You know, is it in an area with other nice-looking buildings? Or is it tucked behind a warehouse?
Exactly.
You know, that's the kind of checklist that will tell you one way or the other, whether it needs a result, design review. Because, you know, the really obscure utility buildings don't. They just don't, as long as they're, you know, built safely and, and, you know.
Okay, well, that's, that's great input. So you're, well, you're, I haven't seen, I see nodding heads. I don't hear much, but you're kind of in agreement that sometimes going through this design review for like, say, an industrial site may not be necessary. I mean.
May not.
Yeah, may not. And so, so that's, that's what we're trying to get feedback about.
I think that's easy to say, may not.
Right, well, the thing is, it's just one of those things, you know. And Daryl's point is completely, point taken. Because, you know, it's, depends on the, on the applicant, you know, it really does, the developer. But, and I don't think people are leaving California.
Because of that.
Well, it's still, it's still, yeah, actually, we're still getting them. But, so.
Well, business-wise.
Business-wise.
But we're just looking for some feedback and, because we're just trying to solve this problem, too. You know, once we adopt a general plan, now we got to, you know, implement it. And sometimes that might, might mean zone, zoning amendments. Not, not particular zone changes, but, you know, amendments to the zoning code to make it consistent with the general plan. So that's kind of the goal, overall goal, is to get consistent with the general plan. How we get there, that's what we're discussing, so. If you get what I'm saying.
And it's, it's not like we're San Jose, where, you know, we're not talking, you know, 150 buildings that we've got to start looking at, you know. We only have a finite.
Right.
Amount of area down in South Weed, and then you're out of the city limits. So it, you know, the good news is, we're, it's not a huge headache like much larger cities are.
True.
But if it's, if something is, could be streamlined.
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, that's the thing. It, it, it's like, it has to be, you know, right.
Yeah.
To everybody. And, well, that's just basically, you know, the Planning Director slash City Manager had this discussion with me, and we were kind of trying to figure out what the next steps would be. I'm thinking, sometimes it's as easy as just saying, you know, why do we have it for M? Or why do we have it for CM if it's not on a main drag? Or it's not, you know, prominently a place? And that's kind of what's, what, what we're looking for feedback on, as well.
Well, I think it's good that the city staff is looking at that. We definitely need to look at incentives, you know, even beyond the scope of what we're doing here tonight to help the businesses. I know if I want to open a manufacturing site in South Weed, and I'd love to see manufacturing come here and bring quality jobs to this community.
That's the point, yeah.
The biggest hurdle I'm gonna have in developing that site, from a project planning standpoint, is going through all of the EIR and SEQA, you know, guidelines that are required. You know, the, and, and if we can streamline this to a point where it's, you know, applicable, if, if at all, that's great. But I don't think that's gonna be the major hurdle in stopping those kinds of development from a little or, or, or medium-sized group. And so, I would like to challenge staff to consider not just, you know, presenting us with further information on this, but also, you know, to City Council or any other appropriate body, what are the things we can do to help support, you know, the small manufacturing or even medium manufacturing or industrial development? And, you know, and getting through all those other hurdles that we have to get through.
Well, yeah. I think, one of my ideas a long time ago, even before the general plan, was to establish infill zones, you know, that are already kind of, we know what, and do the, almost do SEQA upfront, you know. And.
That would be helpful.
You know what I mean? And so, we have an infill area where we've just, bigger than five acres, so we'd have to do, you know, something. But that's one, one method, you know. And that's something that the city does, you know, it incentivizes. You know, other incentives are, are kind of weird. You know, they're, they're really for bigger areas, like tax, you know, exemptions and big deals, you know, like in develop, development agreements, which, which very well could come down the pipe. I mean, we're, we're, I, I think that South Weed is kind of on the, right on the cusp of getting, you know, the more development that happens there that, and shows success, the more, it's like a synergy? I guess, is that a word?
Yeah.
That I want to use here? That we want, that people are gonna be coming there. And so, that's, I think, what they're talking about here in the, in the economic development element, is when they talk about incentivizing. You know, just eliminating and, and streamlining is only one incentive. And we'll, we're gonna have to come up with some more, as you're stating. Is that what you meant?
Oh, yes.
Yep, okay. Well, that's, this is just the beginning. You know, we have a, a new general plan, and there's a lot of things in there that are, that are implementable.
And I'm patiently waiting for all this streamlining and incentivizing and encouragement of light industry in South Weed to head north and work on Main Street and the other areas of our town. So I'm looking forward to some of the changes in code enforcement and stuff like that. I just, I hate to see all of our energies go into one section of town, although I know that that is growing our tax base, and that is important. But I just, I, I'm, I'm still concerned about trying to bring businesses into the middle of town.
Right.
We have open land. Is, you know, how much encouragement is being given to maybe thinking out of the box as far as where your commercial or light industry might be, you know? It concerns me there, too.
Let's, let's just kind of switch bases, and let's talk about downtown for a while. I, I've always thought that the, you know, reducing parking requirements is a good start when you have different, because we have our, our, you know, things like, some cities have old, very old parking ordinances, where the old-school way of thinking is, for a retail establishment, one space per 200 square feet, when really, that's not, that's why you have all these shopping centers with just a handful of cars in the corner, and the rest just empty parking lot. There's such things as that. I think that's even in the general plan. I know it's in the housing element for apartments and, and, and that kind of thing. Those are kind of incentives to streamline permitting process. But, you know, we're talking downtown here. So like, let's say that there's a building with a handful of parking in the back, but that, that, this business wants to come in, it might be a restaurant. And that increases the parking demand on paper, when we know full well it's not gonna change anything, except we're gonna have more crowds downtown, is what we want. So that, when we're talking about stuff, there's other incentives, too. So we could think about those.
Keith, you hit right on it. You, you keep referencing demand, and I agree, Monica, wholeheartedly. We want to see positive development downtown especially. But we have to realize is that you don't have supply without demand. And people are not gonna supply business or improvement downtown if there's no demand for it. And the way we get that demand is through adding jobs or incentivizing those people or businesses to join our community.
They're willing to invest.
There was a time when, when we had an opportunity for some larger places that were turned down. And as a result, not only did we lose, you know, the, everybody focused on tax revenue, things like that, we lost citizens. People moved to where the jobs are.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm fortunate that I'm in a position, I can commute to Waireek every day. But I've had offers in other states. And I choose to be here because I have a, you know, a young family, and this is where we choose to be. But if we don't offer opportunity for the citizens, if people don't have jobs and things to keep them here or, or things that help them develop their, their human capital, then we're not gonna have the demand to bring in the supply that we need for downtown revitalization. And, you know, we need to look at, that's, that's a synergistic thing. I mean, you can't have one without the other. And I think a lot of times, what I've seen, you know, a small town I grew up in and, and having lived here for almost 20 years, is that, you know, we want to have our cake and eat it, too, but you, you've got to, you know, put the work into, you know, making the cake. And so, you know, that's why I'm personally hopeful to see small manufacturing, light manufacturing in South Weed, you know, lar, larger, medium, you know, retail, whatever we can get to provide those jobs. So one, people stay here. They have an economic reason to stay here, and, and they'll, you know, realize that, one, you've got to pay your bills. You've got to eat, you've got to put a roof over your head. But once you get past that basic need, then you can look at, I want to be here because I want to raise my kids here. You know, I want to raise my grandkids here, I want to be part of the community. And so, I think that we have to kind of look at both. You know, while I, I agree with design reviews and the things that we want to, you know, make sure that we are doing the right thing with, with development downtown. The development's not gonna come if there's no demand. And I think that's, you know, an integral piece.
Well, it's, it's, it's two-sided. We talk about being a tourist, you know, South Weed is not a tourist destination.
It's not a destination.
And revitalizing our downtown is what can make us a tourist destination. And it has to be taken into account. I mean, if we can encourage light industry building new buildings on, in South Weed, why can't we encourage them by upping our enforcement of codes in the old buildings so that they are viable and can be, have light industry put in them and, and use an empty building on Main Street instead?
Right.
You know, there's, there's, that's what I mean by incentivize. It's, it's, if everybody's directed towards South Weed, then we won't have the mix that we need in, in, you know, Central Weed. And I'm, you know, I, that's what we need. We need a mix of light industrial, retail, restaurant.
Right.
Living area, that's what makes us successful downtown. And right now, we don't have it.
Yeah, that might have been my mistake on focusing on the key growth area six in this memo. But really, the, the general plan's for the whole, the whole city, so.
But all I'm hearing is South Weed, and I understand.
Yeah, they do specifically say South Weed for getting people, you know, basically for what it is now. I mean, you know, it's basically keep that going. But that's on the, that's on Vista Drive and Black Butte and Chastina. There's a bunch of CM zone. It's in the kind of east of Pilot and all of that. So I think that's why I focused on that. And I'm sorry I didn't look into downtown stuff. Maybe we could have that discussion in the future, but.
That would be wonderful.
Well, the thing is about this design review stuff is that I'm a believer in design review because it raises the value of your property. Or, you know what I mean? If you own a place downtown and you went through a design review, and you made a nice building, well, it's not gonna help anybody if the other people don't have to do the same thing.
Exactly.
But, you know, that's, you, you know, that's, that's kind of what it's about. And the more good design, the more desirable, so people want to come there. You know, it's like, well, I, you know, I hate to mention it, but Mount Shasta, it, there's a difference, you know, between the two. It's crowded there. We've had design review there, and it's been a hassle, you know, for a lot of people for all these years. But, you know, you, you stick to your guns. Well, let's look, look at Bend, Oregon, or somewhere like that. They have a, or Ashland, you know, how many, you know, we go there and we really enjoy it. You know, we walk downtown, it's really pretty. It's neat, it's usable, there's pedestrian stuff. And, you know, that's kind of like, that attracts more. Like, more of that attracts. But see, now, that's, I think that's the difference. We have, that's the C1 and the C2 type zoning, where we want to pay attention. But if we want to have some industry, we might want to back off a little bit on that, you know? I mean, that's kind of what, that's kind of what the thinking is in.
Well, I think what's crucial in the downtown area is code enforcement at this point. So that those buildings are renovated properly and, and are worth, are, are valuable.
Right.
And can be used instead of standing empty. But we all know that, I'm pretty sure.
Unfortunately, I don't have the authority to go around and, or to even, you know.
But there are ordinances already on the books, and it would be lovely to see.
That point is duly noted. I, I've heard that, I think, once a month for the last four years.
Well.
Even, you know, not just here, so.
But look at how many, look at how many papered.
Right.
Baconed buildings, as they seem to be proliferating.
Yes.
Anywho.
Yeah, well, anyway, that's what we're trying to kick off here, is trying to implement the general plan, streamlining, incentivizing. These are implementation programs. Now, you know, we adopted them, so.
Well, thank you for, thank you for listening to our concerns.
Right, no problem.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Any questions? Anything else?
Okay. So that's it for the regular agenda. And we are on to approval of the minutes for the October 3rd meeting.
Fine.
Do any of the commissioners have any report, anything to report?
No, ma'am.
No? Staff reports?
Nothing from me.
Then I move to adjourn. Thank you.